Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. We all rise for the Honorable Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I have recruited Grace, who was a Tenderfoot Scout from Troop G-290, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. If you'd like to come to the podium or wherever you feel comfortable, we'll follow your lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace. Is there any few words you'd like to give to us? No?
What if you always wanted to say something?
You'll never be a politician this way. I'm just joking with you, but good to have you here and your leader. Thank you for being here and thank you for the pledge. Thank you, Council Vice President as well. Okay, we would like to welcome you to the 1,881st regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at our next regular meeting, which will be held on Monday, October the 7th of this year. Mr. or Councilmember Meekham will not be here this evening. He's attending city manners in another capacity, so Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Jolly.
Present.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Present.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Present.
President Toy.
Here. We have a quorum. We have one member absent, and now the presentation of the minutes of the 1,880th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council, which was held on Monday, September 9th of this year. So moved, yes?
I would like to move approval.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
I offered support.
Certainly. McIntyre has moved. Councilmember Barr has supported. Would the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye. Motion passes on the minutes. Council, this is your opportunity, if you want to give any personal announcements, tributes, or recognitions, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I would like to congratulate the Livonia Arts Council on a spectacular concert Friday evening. They were able to bring world-renowned flautists, jazz flautists, and all-around fantastic musician Alexander Zoncheck to the Alexander Blue House for just, I think, nine, over ninety minutes, played straight through, and with some other musicians. It was a fantastic evening. I know there were a number of supporters. I don't know all of them. I do know that my colleague Kathy White was one of the people that helped support the performance, so thank you, Councilwoman White. But congratulations to them on a fantastic evening. It was nice to see you there, President Toy, and a number of other people from our community. But a great evening, so thank you and congratulations.
Absolutely. Great, great event. Anyone else at this point? Okay, I'll introduce department heads, then we do have a few more announcements. Our department heads with us this evening are Paul Bernier. Paul is our city attorney. Thank you for all the work you do. Susan Nash, who is our city clerk, she's going to get real busy here shortly, and we're going to call on her momentarily. And then to my left is Todd Solinsik, who is our city engineer and does a super job too, as well as Mark Terramina, our planning director. Thank you, Mark, for everything you do. Judy Preby, our legislative director, that gets to put up with all of us, seven peoples. And if that's not a challenge, I don't know what is, but other than the legislature and 148 people, so anyways, it's a good crew and we're happy. And then Linda Shield is also out in our audience, our city treasurer, our finance director, Mike Slater, and Mr. Dave Varga, who is our mayor rights legislative director as well, or whatever your very civil service title is, sir. I apologize if I misspoke. Already, we want to also recognize a birthday person in our audience tonight, which is going to be on Saturday, September 28th, and that's our city treasurer, Linda Shield. Happy birthday. Okay, great. We won't go into numbers. And I do want to announce a public hearing, and that is going to be, council, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, October 2nd of this year, at 7:00 PM in this auditorium at 33,000 Civic Center Drive, proposed special assessment for street lighting project for Adams Court, which is a site condominium located south of Plymouth Road between Echols and Allois Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 30, to establish an assessment role for lighting over in that area. And that again is October 2nd, and it's a Wednesday at 7:00. Okay? Also, we have new data tonight on item 13. Council, I do want to remind you that the city did an awesome job of some well over five to six hundred people coming through for shred day, where they could shred their important papers and make confetti out of it, and also tires, older tires, as well. That was very well, very successful. And I do, if we could have a moment of silence for Mr. John Bates, who was a proprietor at Bates Hamburgers. He is survived by his family, passed over the weekend, and who didn't grow up on Bates? Or when you have company, you always get served Bates. You bring Bates Hamburgers there. So we want to recognize John and his family for all the wonderful things he's done through the years. If we could have just a few moments of silence for Mr. Bates. Thank you. God bless. And then we also have wishes going out to one of my favorite newscasters, Cokie Roberts, who passed away. She was an excellent journalist and did some awesome, awesome kinds of things on radio, TV, and also on Channel 7 during Sunday mornings, when and if after church or before church you get a chance. And also Janelle, who is still recovering very quickly, and we're very proud of her. She was on the Internet the other day, and she's up walking, and we're just excited for her to be healed in the quickest possible way she can. Our prayers and wishes go out to her family as well. Okay, with that, council, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any manner that isn't on this green sheet, would you please approach the podium to my left or right, and we'll be happy to take your comments. Good evening, John.
Thank you, President Toy, members of council. John Grisbick, 11301 Hubble. And I know I wasn't able here to, or I wasn't able to be here during the Vietnam, or the moving Vietnam Wall tributes that you had, and I intended to be. I actually was out of town at that time. And as a resident, I just wanted to express my appreciation through the council to everybody on that committee. And I'm not speaking for anybody other than myself, even though some of the groups I'm with contributed to that. And I also learned over time not to recognize individuals, because sometimes that gets you in trouble. But everybody that was involved in that, I appreciate it as a citizen, and I had a small little role in it for a couple hours before I went up north that weekend. And it was just phenomenal. I was moved by how it was, the landscaping and everything that went into it, it looked like it belonged here, and it did for the time it was here, and then when it moves on. And I wasn't surprised at all that Livonia had the ability financially, through contributions and volunteers, to be able to secure that. And I appreciate everyone who worked hard on that. Many of them are friends of mine. Again, I appreciate it. So, and also, there was a small piece of it that recognized Iraqi veterans as well in some of the battles that went on. So again, thank you for your time, Madam President and members of council. Have a good evening.
Thank you, John. That's very kind of you to come forward. Go ahead, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I just wanted to say that it's nice to see you here, Mr. Grisbick, and just about any time there's anything going on in Livonia that involves volunteer work and a lot of hard volunteer work, we always see you there. So thank you for your contributions to that and everything else you do for the city. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? No? Anyone else wish, yes, go right ahead.
If there's nobody else from the audience coming forward, I'll just take this moment to do this. Over the weekend, actually, I was thinking through a lot about the master plan, and in particular Plymouth Road between Inkster and Middlebelt. And anybody that's familiar with that area of town knows that there's some distressed buildings down there. And we've talked at different times in this council, we've had different opportunities for redevelopment there that we've considered, but particularly in light of the fact that our master plan has identified that as one of the three focus zones to develop, I'd like to offer, for the council's consideration, a resolution to put into the Economic Development, Strategic Planning, and Technology Committee, the topic of just exploring what our, what economic tools are available, what strategic moves we might make to help spur development, redevelopment of that area, and help kickstart that master plan. So I'd offer that proposal.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Barr, supported by Councilwoman White, and you have the direction on that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay. Thank you very much, Councilman. Council, we're then, if there's nobody else and no one else for audience communication, we have reports from the mayor and other city officials. And Clerk Nash, if you would like to take the floor, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Six weeks from tomorrow, we have an election on November 5th. We have a city election. The first round of absentee ballots will be mailed out. We'll leave City Hall this Wednesday. We have ten, approximately 10,300 absentee ballots leaving. This is the largest mailing to date for Livonia City. And I expect these mailings to go up going forward with every election, after last year's Proposal 3 passage of no reason absentee. Anyone that wishes to obtain an absentee ballot, just contact our office. You can get an absentee ballot application online that looks just like this. You can download one yourself, or we have them on our counter. And on that, you can also check off if you would like to be on the permanent absentee ballot application list. And what that means, going forward, you will get an application in the mail. We always have to have an application for every election cycle, so you could not, we cannot just mail a ballot without an application, but we can automatically mail out applications to residents who so choose. So like I said, the first round of absentee ballots will go out this Wednesday with another mailing early next week. Absentee ballot applications can be obtained on the clerk's counter and on the clerk's website, and I believe on the Secretary of State's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Madam Clerk, we need to go back to the resolution that was done by Councilman Barr. I think we could safely show seven on that unless council would like a vote, or six, unless, so I can't count, okay. So anyhow, can we show six on that safely, everyone, or would you prefer a vote on it? I mean, it is a vote, but just direction-wise? Why don't you take the vote, just in case? I don't want to give Bernier any more gray hair than he has. Go right ahead.
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Councilman Barr as well. Okay, we'll move into our regular agenda, and the green sheet, please, is, we're going to read item 1 through 10, is listed on the consent agenda. This will be voted on as one item. This does not mean that they are any less important than any of the other items on the agenda, but rather, they have been deemed not to be controversial natured. Excuse me, do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Please go ahead, Vice President.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Barr. Supported by Councilman Barr, that was correct. Oh, Kritzman, I'm sorry. You guys sound alike sometimes down there. Sorry. Councilman Kritzman did support that, Madam Clerk. All righty. If we have no discussion, anything else, will you take the vote on that?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye. Motion passes. We are under unfinished business, item 11, this, these are meetings of different committees, and the first committee that Councilmember Barr chairs is Finance and Budget Committee, which met on August 19th. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did meet on August 19th. As you said, this meeting is part of our budget cycle, is the opportunity for council, we get kind of an early peek at what the administration's thinking for the budget for the next fiscal year. It's also an opportunity for us to weigh in on certain priorities that we'd like considered as the final budget's put together, which, by the way, we're reviewing that budget in a committee meeting this week on Wednesday. So we had all committee members present, myself, Kathy White, and Jim Jolly, and the rest of the council was there as well, as was the mayor and a number of other city officials, and a few residents as well. We convene the meeting at 7:00 PM on August 19th. And just a few of the highlights, Finance Director Mike Slater went through the current state of the budget as we look towards the next year's fiscal year. So a few items about revenue, fiscal year 2020 property tax revenue is projected to increase by another 1.2 million, that's 4%. We'll have a small headly rollback for the third straight year, which means that the tax rate is going down, which means our revenue is going up. Personal property tax reimbursement is projected to be about the same as what this year was, and for residents that pay attention to this, this is the one that the last several years, we've actually gotten a higher-than-expected reimbursement from the state. We anticipate that happening again, but in what I would consider great fiscal discipline. On our part as a city, we are not planning for it in the budget. So hopefully, we can look forward to another windfall there again, that we can determine what we need to do with it. The taxable value is projected to increase 4.3%. Residential is up 4.2, commercial up 4.4, industrial up 5.5. So good times in Livonia. State shared revenues are increasing 3.5%, and the general fund overall revenue is projected to increase at 2.7%. On the expense side, we talked primarily about our pension and retiree healthcare obligations. Our pension contribution is increasing by about $1 million this next year, and our retiree healthcare contributions are decreasing by about $780,000. And then as far as some preliminary items that were discussed, we talked about some significant infrastructure repairs to Silver Village and Newburgh Village, talked a little bit about Plymouth Road Development Authority, and some repair items that they'll have coming potentially in the next year. We expect our roads fund to be in a little bit better shape than it was this year, and wasn't in bad shape this year. Last year, there was some talk about large recycle bins for residents. That is coming off the table. There's a number of reasons for that. We've talked about it here, but just there's some economic challenges with the whole recycle business that enter into that conversation, but we're no longer pursuing that. And staffing levels are remaining relatively flat. And then we talked about some suggestions from council. Some of the things that were suggested were more staffing for inspection, so we can do a better job of keeping up with the different requirements that we put on various property owners as they get resolutions from us. Modernization of the City Hall auditorium. A strategic plan for Greenmead was discussed at a high level, and the need to discuss it more. And then also some conversation about ways to embrace technology in the way we do business. We adjourned the meeting at 8:08 PM, so there was a lot to cover in about an hour. And like I said, this week, we have the budget being presented to us on Wednesday night in our Finance Committee meeting. And with that, Madam President, I'd like to suggest that we receive and file the 2019 Assessment Data booklet from the City Assessor dated May 13th, 2019. And this resolution is a standing resolution that will remain in committee.
Correct. Great. Thank you very much. Great report. Any questions, comments from the City Council? No? Okay. Good. All righty, item 12, as we move down this agenda, is also now a committee of the whole meeting, which is held on August 28th of this year. There were several subjects in there, and since I chaired the committee and most all of you, the complete council was there, as well as several others, pardon me, there were two absences, but most of you were there, how's that? And we also had others join us as their issue came up. First one being the Police Department having concerns with certain hotels in our city, and we wanted to consider a report and recommendation there on the committee, and so our chief, Kurt Cade, came in and spoke to the council regarding hotels in the city. And some of the top five hotels that had a lot of runs from January of 18 until present, so there were several of those commented on, and reasons for those perhaps having a lot of calls, because there are different types of calls that some of these hotels get. They also are kind of reflective of sometimes a management style of each different hotel, and some retail fraud as it pertains to that particular area sometimes. So we had long discussions on that, and just that it takes a lot of police personnel to obviously answer those calls and go out and handle those with great care and precision as you would. So council also discussed options for a room tax, possible hotel tax, a cost recovery, and also an occupancy tax that could be labeled as reasonable. We also adopted a resolution to ask our state legislators in Lansing for their assistance in obtaining an occupancy tax for the hotels in our city. There seems to be some discretion and suggestion that only certain cities within our state can implement that. And so we're asking for some more information from our state legislators to perhaps investigate that, research that a little bit further. This item is going to remain in the committee for further discussion at a later time, and that's kind of the report of number one. Number two was the subject matter of food trucks licensing under city ordinances that we referred this to Committee Hall. A discussion took place, a nice, healthy discussion requiring food trucks to be licensed to operate in the city, as well as adding chapter to our ordinances. And, you know, as, as things change, we'd like to keep up with the times, and perhaps we're a little behind at the moment, but we did bring up some points about buying licenseings per day if that's needed, parking issues on streets, unable to stay in location for more than 24 hours. And I know that our law department is bringing forth, and we want to receive and file that correspondence regarding a draft proposed amendment adding a new chapter to title a health and safety of the Livonia Court of Ordinances. This item also will remain in committee of the whole for further discussion, as law and others in the administration have input and research on that. Item three was a zoning petition submitted by Leo Sauvy Building to rezone some properties on the west side of Farmington Road and Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile. And we, we had some discussions on that. This item had been completed with the second reading for the rezoning, so we took no further action on that item. So therefore, we were able to remove it from the committee with no further action. This item will be placed on our regular meeting of September 23rd, so I do need, I do need a motion on that, if you will, since, and then a support.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the resolution to take no further action on this item.
Thank you. Do I have support? And supported by Vice President Jolly. Is there discussion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye. Motion passes. Council, item four, which is almost the last item of the committee, is referring the subject matter of employee wellness to the committee for its report and recommendation. This information for the council in 2017, there is nothing new to report, so there's no need to keep it in committee. We requested to take no further action, and so therefore, we'd like it to be able to be removed from the committee. And with that, this action will be out of committee of the whole, and we do need a resolution on that one as well.
So move.
Support.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Barr, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Were there discussion or any more questions? Anyone from the audience hearing and seeing no one? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote on that?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Thank you. Aye. Madam Clerk, we have item five in council. It was a sign permit application. Bottom line to this whole thing is, it was submitted by YM Associates for an approving of ground sign. The petitioner has sold the property, so we are asking this to be removed as well out of the committee. Council, could someone make a motion on that?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and supported, and supported by, yeah, Kritzman. Was there further discussion? And, you know, also, if I just, real quick, can add, we need to receive and file the letter of August 7th regarding that petition by YM Associates. Okay, if there's no further discussion on that item, no one from the audience, would the clerk take the vote on that?
Vice President Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Toy.
Aye. We, the meeting was adjourned at 8:20, and thank you very much, council, for your indulgence. Yes, please.
May I just make a comment, please?
Please do.
On the first item regarding the police, Chief Cade's report to us about the hotels, that generally, the correlation between where they have very frequent calls and calls for concerning issues, that there's a correlation between those calls and what tend to be the residential, longer-stay, lower-priced, older facilities. And there's a very strong correlation there between those properties and a very high incidence above average of police calls. And they don't, do not see that same kind of correlation with the newer upscale hotel properties, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Good point, Clerk. Glad for that clarification.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. We're, council, we're under unfinished business, item 13, this is a roll call vote, and it's a proposed amendment. The first reading was given by Councilman Meekham. We have new data. We do need a motion on the full, or a first reading. Would someone like to give that first reading? Or second reading? Sorry, second reading. You want to offer, Councilman Kritzman?
I'd be more than happy to offer second reading on this item.
Thank you. You have heard second reading. Our city treasurer's here. Could we call on her for a moment, please, for some new information on 13? Is a petitioner here by any chance on this? No? Okay. Go right ahead. Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Good evening, Madam President and council members. So there are three addresses on this that are proposed for the zoning ordinance amendment, 8999, 8985, and 9981. 8985 and 8981, the property taxes have not been paid yet, that were due on Monday, September 16th. I did personally speak to the petitioner on Thursday, the 19th, so he is well aware that they are due, and that I would be letting council know that.
Madam Chair. Yes, please, go right ahead.
I'll continue to offer the approving resolution, but I'll ask that that be placed on the, oh, no, we're in a regular meeting.
We're in second, yeah. We're in second reading.
I'll ask that this be placed on the next voting meeting.
Okay. Great.
I think this is a situation where we're talking about $137.60. I have the utmost confidence that it'll get, it'll get resolved, but I'm not aware of any scheduling conflicts that would be impacted on our critical nature if this isn't moved to the next meeting, so I'll ask that that be moved.
Thank you, Councilman. That'll be on the October 7th meeting then, which is a regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, for always, you know, coming and helping us out on those tax issues. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Madam Clerk, so we're going to move that, and then we're on item 14. And that is a waiver petition. This is, has two resolutions. Resolution A would approve, and a resolution B would waive the 1,000-foot separation requirement from existing Class C license. This is Zookin's Rib Shack over here at the Five Mile and Farmington area. They want to operate, and they do operate, a full-service restaurant, but they'd like to include an outdoor dining patio for your pleasure in the snow. No, only joking. So, council, it's your pleasure, what we'd like to do on this, where they're also utilizing a Class C liquor license, the sale of beer and wine and spirits for consumption on the premises.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll offer the resolution A, which is the approving resolution.
Certainly, okay. Resolution A we have. Is there support for resolution A?
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Is there discussion? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to comment on resolution A, which would approve this? It's kind of quiet here tonight. So, Madam Clerk, if there's no further, we're going to take the vote on resolution A, which was moved by these two young ladies here.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Is there any others?
Madam Chair, I'll offer resolution B, which would waive the 1,000-foot separation requirement from existing, between existing Class C license establishments.
Do I have support on that?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Kritzman. Discussion? No? Anybody from the audience? No discussion? Is a petitioner here tonight? Want to come up? Okay. Anything to add, sir?
In regards.
In regards to what you're doing?
Like I said, just pretty much a-
Oh, your name and address.
Louis Collins, 33897 Five Mile, Livonia. I appreciate, you know, the consideration and everything, and trying to help this. Like I said, I wanted to do it for the patrons and everything, and try to brighten up that strip. It needs a little bit more enhancing and everything. I did bring a couple pictures here, if that would end up helping there, to help if there was any concerns in regards to blocking any of the cars there. We could do that, if that would help. And then also, the pots, and enhance that whole side there, so.
All righty. Okay. We'll get that passed out.
Madam Chair, just a quick clarification, since you felt compelled to pass the photograph around, is it your intention to put parking blocks out there?
Yeah, well, you said planters, the cement planters, or that.
I did.
Whichever, yeah.
And your response is to put parking blocks out there?
No, no, and the planters too. Yep, that's why I put one of the planters, but I'll put more, and they'll be a little bit higher.
I would hope that you'd find some nice decorative planters and have them spaced.
Definitely. I wouldn't be going through all those.
About four feet in the middle.
Right.
I don't think parking blocks is sufficient.
No, no, no. I was only because of the curb, you guys were mentioning about the height, so that was only to add to it. I didn't know the concern. If there was any more to that, like I said, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Any concerns were?
Certainly, we appreciate that. Yes, vice president.
And just, just as a follow-up, the picture that you showed does show a parking block. Is that something that was just added recently for the picture, or is that currently there?
No, no, that would be something, like I said, going forward, we could put there if there was any concern for the distance.
Yeah, I understand, but was this parking block?
No.
When did that end up there?
No, that's not there. I had put it there to show you if there was any concern in terms of a buffer zone.
So you just moved it there for purposes of taking a photograph?
Yes.
It's not currently there, is it?
No.
Okay, because I don't think you can just add those without-
No, no.
I just, it's, it's one of these things where we're obviously concerned about the aesthetics and you adding value in a pleasant-looking thing.
Right.
The parking blocks kind of negate that, so, okay. How did you, just out of curiosity, how did you move the parking block, and where is it now? I, I, I mean, I hate to say that, but I mean, I mean, it's-
It's off in the back, over by the fence, where there, you know, it's not nowhere near a parking, or there's not one missing, or anything like that.
It's like, how, how did the Egyptians build the pyramids? How did you move this parking block?
Yeah, that's for, it's more illustrated purposes, to show the height of the, because I know last time, part of the concern was, is that the rail was even with the road, which kind of shows you, too, the lip of the sidewalk in comparison with that.
Madam Chair. Certainly, please go ahead, Councilman Kritzman.
I think what's brilliant about this whole episode is that if you flip-
Oh, I know.
-the parking block picture over, you find a really nice barricade with steel vertical supports inset into the ground, into the concrete. It's probably achieving both the aesthetic desires, and at the same time, a proper barricade for protecting pedestrians as well. So, I don't believe the resolution ties you to anything like this, but if you did something like this, we'd probably never talk again. It'd be a good thing.
Okay. Was that your ultimate plan?
No, like I said, when we left-
The parking block was the plan.
No, no. What I'm saying is that when we left it, you were concerned with what it would end up being. So, like I said, I'm, I'm here to do whatever you feel is going to be the best situation.
Well, Madam Chair.
Hey, to me! Yes, go right ahead.
Having not finished yet, I guess I'll take the floor again.
Sure.
When we last had this discussion, there was some question of how much space actually existed between the, the edge of the sidewalk, the parking area, you had the drive area, then you have a sidewalk area, then you have the building. Did you fill us in on some of that?
Twenty-six feet, from the grass to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk. The sidewalk is-
And I believe 22 feet is the required.
The sidewalk is what width?
Eight.
Eight?
Mm-hmm.
Eight? The city sidewalk, or the part along the building?
Part along the building.
So the part along the building, plus an additional four. So you could potentially capture 12 feet away from your building, and still have the proper requirement from a dimension purpose, and I'm kind of looking to Mr. Termina here, to maintain two-way traffic, Mr. Zelensik, right? Proper? Two-way traffic along there?
22 feet.
24 would be preferred.
24 is preferred. We have 26, plus an additional eight. Honestly, in 10 feet, you could accomplish what you need in that patio space. So if we get some planters out there along that, I mean, I guess I have a difficulty here, and we all want the concept of outside something. We all want the opportunity to go eat out there. Today was a beautiful day. Beautiful day to go sit outside. Wasn't too hot, wasn't too cold. It was great.
Right.
It was a rare day in Michigan. Take advantage of it. But are we, are we, are we approving something without enough information, or are we not being restrictive enough in our description of what that is that we're approving?
I mean-
We already voted.
Darn it.
And like I said, in all honesty, have, have you been inside the restaurant?
We've, we haven't, only done takeout.
Well, the only reason I say is, because I spent a year and a half building that out, and I wouldn't just throw something outside that wasn't appealing, or, you know, I wouldn't go through the trouble of inside.
Hey, we can always take back what we did 10 minutes ago, if we want. So let's stop the chatter on the backside, but-
So like I said, I wouldn't have done as much as I've done in the inside, and then let the outside just be. I mean, obviously-
Well, I have confidence that you're going to come up with something moving forward, but I hope you take to heart some of the commentary that you've heard here this evening.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, next time, pass it along this way.
It's on on TV, actually.
Further comments? Anyone? No? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, will the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes, sir. Just be sure you do a really nice job, okay?
Oh, definitely. Oh, yes. You can be sure of that.
Yeah, okay. I know you will. Thanks.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
Judy Preby just reminded me a little bit ago, at our August 26th meeting, I offered a resolution to put into the Environment, Health, and Safety, I think it was, let me get the exact name, Public Safety, Health, and Environment Committee, the subject of what alternatives we had for the managing the deer and coyote population. We failed to get support on that, and so we need to go back and do that now. So, thank you, Judy, for reminding us of that.
Counsel, your pleasure. You wanted to make that motion, is what you're saying?
The, the motion there was there to put into that committee the subject of the coyote and deer population in Livonia, and what options we have, and what strategies we might want to consider for addressing that.
Okay. Is there support for that, counsel?
Do we need support for that?
That's why we're doing this, because we-
Yeah, well, that's what I figured. Support. Support. Okay, we got support from Councilman McIntyre. Is there discussion from the council? I don't hear anyone, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item on deer and coyotes. Okay.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead. Sure, sure.
So, I commend Mr. Barr for bringing this up. This is a complaint that we hear largely from residents, and certain times of the year, we hear it more often than others. I support the idea of having the discussion of what the possibilities are. I don't necessarily know that we're going into this knowing what any of those possibilities suggested might be. Obviously, the concern in regards to the deer, we hear that they eat a lot of foliage, a lot of plants that people have spent time and money caring for. But the thing that's more interesting to me here is, is the coyote population, and how many of them are, and what the danger that they do pose to residents is. So I happily support this, and I commend him for bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, will the clerk please take the vote?
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. That concludes our items for this agenda. We go back to audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any manner that wasn't and didn't appear on the green sheet, if you'd come to the podium to my left or right, be happy to hear your comments. If not, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Barr, supported by-
Second.
Council Vice President Jolly to adjourn. I think you can show seven. We are adjourned.
Six.
Six.